We would like to welcome everybody to our Planning Commission meeting tonight at, on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. All of the planning commissioners are here with the exception of Amy Ann Spires and Wanda and I, who have been excused, thank you, and the rest of the commissioners are all here. This is a part of our, our meeting where public comment is accepted, and if you have something that's not on the agenda that you want to address the Planning Commission about, feel free to come forward and state your name and your residence and what you'd like to say.
Could I just tweak that and say, or if you're not representing one of the items on the agenda and you'd like to add commentary, you're welcome to come up at this time?
Oh, I thought I said that, thank you.
It just didn't come off that way, the way you worded it.
Thank you, Mike. So, has anybody liked to say anything?
Any member?
You can come forward to the mic.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Cunningham. I live off of 700 West, and so this whole apartment complex is definitely going to interfere with our lives, mostly because that is an enormous amount of new cars that are already going to be going to congest an area that has already become a big problem with that roundabout area in the street near the gas station. It's already a problem at high-traffic times. It is becoming a problem during the morning and the afternoon where you're constantly playing Frogger, trying to get around that roundabout, and my, I have to back out into the street, just a few houses down, and all of the people that are trying to get around Riverdale, they cut from 31st Street through our residence so that, because it's faster than going through Riverdale. And so it is a high-traffic spot that people are figuring out that they can get around that. So now we're adding 153, I think, apartments, figuring two cars per apartment, possibly more, and we've got this big, huge, beautiful roundabout, but a big problem, because we've got the school down the street, and you've got all of the parents trying to get through there as well, and then that kindergarten or whatever. So it's a big problem, and then trying to turn, if you're on Riverdale, trying to turn down 700, it's, again, a high problem, because you're having to juggle with the high-traffic coming over the bridge, because it's just a caution light most of the time, and so you're having to wait your turn and play, you know, Russian roulette to try and make a turn. So we end up having to go all the way to Roy and come over and come down over the train bridge, or you have to go all the way to 31st Street in order to come down Parker. So it's, it is a big problem, and I think adding that many homes to that small of an area is just going to be insanely difficult, and I, I, I just can't imagine that that has been thought through very well, as far as the concerns for the people that are living in that area. It's already a big problem, and I'm not sure that you're aware that people are using it as a high-traffic diversion from Riverdale, which you already know is a big problem, because we've already talked about that we don't have enough resources for the police, to get more police, and I, I would, again, interject, maybe raising the taxes so that you can pay for some more police, but that whole area right there is so congested with already a lot of problems in the morning, and all you have to do is go and try and be in that area, because also have school buses that pick up kids at that intersection. So add that to the deliveries for the meat department, that meat business. It's insane, it's insane. So I really, really encourage you to at least go a couple of times in the morning and see what I'm talking about, and realize that the residents are, I have to go that way to get to work. Otherwise, I'm going to have to go all the way to 32nd, and then go all the way across to Ogden, just to go to South Ogden, where I work. And, I mean, I've, I've worked with communities in California for things like this, and sometimes what looks good on paper isn't the reality that people are having to deal with. So I appreciate you listening, and hopefully you can take some of that to heart to what we have to deal with, okay?
Thank you so much for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll go on to presentations and reports. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. I briefly noted in the work session, well, maybe in a little more detail, not briefly, but we have the general plan, pretty much comprehensive general plan update, pretty much completed from a draft, our final draft perspective. The review committee, that's called Steering Committee, have had it sent to them for their review comments. We received some back. Technically, the deadline for response commentary back on that was Friday to our consultant group, but I think we're still open to receiving more should we get some coming late. The plan is for it to come to the Planning Commission for a presentation review next, at our next meeting, so the, the second week of June, and then to set the public hearing that night following that presentation. So that's when you get your first chance to look at it. You'll have it for a couple of weeks, maybe even up to a month, to, to look over it and pour over it and read over it and get a good feel for it, and then it'll come back for a recommendation review to the City Council at that point, the anticipation being that it'll go to the City Council, their second meeting in July for final consideration, and then that will become the new general plan at that point. So the other thing I noted was we'll be updating our land use codes as it relates to single-family, two-family, and townhome subdivisions. Per state legislature, we'll, we'll update and change that, that process, so it'll become its new own independent process, wherein it will have review by an administrative review board for the preliminary submittal of that subdivision, and then the final review will be completed by city staff to make sure all requirements of city code are met, and that, that's how those will, will proceed. We have to have that in our code updated, meeting state code buyer before, I believe it's February 1st, 2024, is what the code, state code says, so we'll be working on that, and then also doing a comprehensive update. So those are the two things there, and then we did briefly talk about Cheddar's being close. Feels like, well, on their website, they've, they've advertised a mid-July opening date for their, their grand opening. It feels like that's probably what they're going to shoot for, there may be a week or two before that, that's kind of a soft opening, but we'll, we'll let you know as we go, and that, yeah, that's what we have, so there you go.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent items. If anybody has any comments, we'd like to hear them now. If not, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the consent items.
A second?
All in favor?
Yes.
And that is unanimous, and that was for the work and regular meeting sessions, April the 25th, 2023. Action item number one, consideration of conditional use permit request for automobile sales and service used by Tesla Riverdale, located at approximately 4851 South, 1500 West, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, is requested by Six S Development LLC and AWA Engineering. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. I'll cover an executive summary that will address both items A and B, at least the cursory, and then we can go into item B in more detail after we review item A. Yeah, the, the request is per Six S Development LLC and AWA Engineering, they're represented tonight by Jake Tate, who is in the audience, available and able to answer any questions you may have here in a minute. The affected parcel is in a regional commercial C3 zone. The property is currently located within the Westbench RDA and on redevelopment agency land, that is, the redevelopment agency is selling to the development group, and, well, I guess Tesla through the development group, that property. There's no public hearing required for the consideration of site plan proposal. They are required to have, as you noted, the conditional use permit request because of the automobile sales and service requests used for this site. So that is that component, and then obviously, as it relates to the final site plan, when we get there, you'll be the recommendation review body for that. So for the purposes of the conditional use permit, you'll be the administrative approval body, and then for the purposes of the site plan, you'll be the recommendation body, so just to make that real clear. The general plan use is planned commercial high for this proposed area. As it relates to the review basis or review for conditional use permit, you'll see 10-19-5 guides that. There's an article A through G, you'll want to look over that and see if there's anything that stands out to you, be concerned that would warrant any specific conditions as part of a consideration. If you feel like that's appropriate, please feel free to discuss it as a group, and then filter that into your discussion about how you want to proceed with that consideration for the automobile dealership and service. You'll see the application thereafter and the fee being paid, and then you'll just see the, the site planning documentation for that conditional use request. So with that, I would defer to the Planning Commission if you'd like to either have any questions for me or Mr. Tate, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Tate, would you like to come forward? State your name and your city of residence.
Jake Tate, 2010 North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah.
Thank you.
Yep. So glad to be back and in front of you again, here to answer any questions you have.
And then, and obviously, for the purposes of this discussion, just as it relates to the conditional use permit, we'll get into the site plan, obviously, the second party.
Any questions, commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request for automobile sales and service used by Tesla Riverdale, located at approximately 4851 South, 1500 West, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, as requested by Six S Development LLC and AWA Engineering.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Would you poll the commission, please, Michelle?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and that is unanimous. Do you want me to present?
Item B, and Mr. Tate can sit for a minute, because I'll probably take a second to review.
Consideration of recommendation to City Council for final site plan request for Tesla Riverdale, located approximately 50, 4851 South, 1500 West, in Riverdale, Utah, 84405, is requested by Six S Development LLC and AWA Engineering. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. So as noted, the executive summary is attached to this, so we've already outlined that. Mr. Tate will represent the interested parties for the purposes of this discussion. The final site plan review, I have completed, updates all items that, that were previously requested. I do continue to note the signage. I know Mr. Tate and Mr. Moore are in the process of working on signage and getting me something, but I mean, I just haven't reflected that we want to get that finalized before we go to City Council to have a feel for what that will be, so that the council is aware of it, especially as it has some implications for the RDA as a whole. It's kind of a, an interesting situation where there's, there's a little bit of an RDA element to this. So I just have noted, beyond signage items, dedicated right-of-way edge starts is not clearly identified on the site plan, just that the term, where the right-of-way starts, which made me a few arrows right-of-way, just so it's clear. Sometimes it creates challenges if we're not real clear on that. Under new and existing gas lines, I just have new lines, location, size, and type not shown where applicable. Please add a note regarding new gas lines installation per Dominion Energy or something to that effect, and that would make my, my comment there go away. They know about the, the water rights with Public Works, I just have it noted, and then the conditional use. So not a whole lot there. I do appreciate the guidance on the Birmingham that did come up in the work session, that is, it's a good observation and not one you kind of sometimes think about when you're seeing a flat, a flat layout, but obviously, we know there's elevation differential, so it's probably not going to be a real big issue at that point, so that's appreciated. Looking at the Public Works review comments under stormwater, ones we typically see, engineering guidance relative to the drainage systems operation, he does say needs to include copy utility plan, CDS manhole, plan detail for the box, reboard, reboard on structure and emergency overflow, hydraulic separator BMPs to treat it, and notice of intent file of state and injection well permits. So stuff that Mr. Tate is probably very aware of and understands. As far as water, provide water usage peak demands, provide what water shares will be used to meet water requirements, provide a 30-foot easement for current and future water lines on north end of property, new 10-inch on the west end could be 45-degree bends, and the line going north can be removed. So I think he's just offering that there's an option there to explore if they want to explore different layout configuration. Proposed sewer flow peaks daily, sewer flows daily and peak, including peak demand time, so he knows what the, the needs are for the overall sewer system, and then updated response comments. No concerns noted from the, the police department, no concerns noted from the fire department for the site. I did note in the work session, Mr. Tate, that this is one of the shortest engineering commentaries we've seen at this stage in the review process from our, our city engineer, so.
My goal is to have zero.
So that was very positive to see.
You were close.
I've never seen his comments come back on one page at, at the planning commission phase, so, so that's good. He does know on sheet 100 notes, last line needs to have the word spelled correctly for expanded. Property line needs to have a 10-foot public utility easement around the outside of the entire property, and 30-foot utility easement needs to be on the record plat for the, the utilities farther to the north, which Mr. Tate knows all too well about. Provide the details on our structural calculations for the retaining wall. Detention base in the southeast corner of property needs to have a structure to clean the stormwater for setting out the finds and floatables. Please verify invert elevations and grade on stormwater boxes and pipes, and then he notes the numbering, and then need to show the details and sizing for the grease interceptors. So you'll see thereafter the application for the site plan, the fee being paid, there's an engineering, or offsite, it's the engineering cost estimate for it. I apologize, I, I can't remember, do you remember if, if our engineer already approved the engineer's cost estimate at the preliminary, or I can't remember?
I remember getting approvals.
Yeah, so.
It was very minimal, because most of it's getting approvals.
Yeah, it's really limited impact. So at any rate, we'll have it, we, we will be sure to have a comment on that before it goes to the council, just note that. And then you'll see Mr. Tate's review commentary on all items that have been addressed or resolved, the stormwater documentation that supports the project thereafter, and the maintenance plan, and then following both those documents, you'll see the, again, the exterior architectural plan and the coloration elements, and then the drawings themselves. So with that, defer to the Planning Commission if you have any comments, questions, or concerns you'd like to discuss with me or Mr. Tate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake Tate, 2010 North Redwood Road, Salt Lake City, Utah.
Thank you again.
Yeah, no problem.
I do have one question.
Sure.
It might be kind of technical and probably doesn't have any bearing on, on the approval, but this type of stormwater retention that we're doing is kind of new to me, and I'm just curious, if, it looks like there is some maintenance that needs to be done with, on a regular basis with that retention. What happens if the property goes vacant? Who then is responsible for the maintenance of that stormwater retention?
That's a good question. I, I assume it would still be the property owner, because even if the business itself was vacant, someone would still be the owner of the property, and they would be the one required to maintain it, even if it wasn't in occupancy. But those storm chambers, the, you could go several years, like five, six years, without having it be a problem, especially where we're at, where we don't have a ton of, we're kind of up on a pinnacle up there on the hill, we don't have a lot of trees and things blowing things down in the storm rain, but, yeah, they, they, they make them pretty good. The, the arched chambers are a little easier to clean, because you can actually, they have a row of those chambers that are designed to be cleaned out, give a manhole at either end, and you can put a jet down there and kind of push all the stuff to the one end and then suck it out. So it is, it, they, those are pretty easy to clean, and they have two separators, the hydrodynamic separators on either end that is kind of pre-treatment, so it should, by the time it gets to the chambers, it should be, have all the floatables and sediments and everything cleaned out of it anyway, so.
So I would imagine that those need to be done kind of on a schedule. You don't want them to get to the point where it's noticeable that there's an issue.
Yeah.
I'm just, I, I just wonder, you know, if that would necessarily be the case if the property was vacant and it was just a property owner, if, if, if that schedule would be followed, or if, if, if it would get to the point, possibly, where, you know, it, it wasn't being done as often as it, as it maybe should.
Why, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, so the long, the long-term stormwater maintenance agreement that's in your packet is actually.
By ordinance, we require.
It's a recorded document.
Yeah, it's recorded against the property. They can't, they can't dodge it.
Technically, the city could lean the property.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, so that was.
Yeah, the Public Works Director can basically pull it to the, the, the interested owner of the property is and say, hey, this plan says you will do this, you have to do this kind of thing.
Okay, because I, you know, I noticed that, you know, the next item that we're, that we're doing is using the same type of storm water detention basin as, as what this is, and so that's the purpose of my concern.
Your concerns aren't unfounded. For years, there was no documentation. Riverdale does a good job, they do require you to register your underground detention system with the state, and also to file and record the long-term stormwater maintenance agreement, which kind of puts teeth to the actual system, where there's been many jurisdictions and many projects that have gone in that there's no documentation necessarily, other than the people who put it in, and maybe the owner was told about it, and hopefully they're maintaining it, but Riverdale has a process that actually gives the city some teeth that enforces it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd also like to commend you, this is one of the cleanest presentations I've seen in quite a while, so that was commendable. Thank you.
Good job.
Accordingly, I would make a motion that we present a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the final site plan request for Tesla Riverdale, located at approximately 4851 South, 1500 West, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, as requested by Six S Development LLC and AWA Engineering, pending addressing any of the items listed by staff and the city engineer, meeting those satisfactory.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poll the commission, please.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two on our agenda is consideration of a conditional use permit request for the development of a multifamily residential unit in excess of 25 dwelling units, located at approximately 671 West, 4400 South, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, as requested by Wright Development Group. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. Logan Johnson is here representing Wright Development Group's interest in this project. As noted in, in the packet, the executive summary covers both the conditional use permit as well as the subdivision, as well as the site plan. So I did one executive summary with all the information being very similar, it seemed to be the, the most efficient ways to present that information. That being said, the zoning for this is multiple-family residential R4 zoning. It does, as it relates to the subdivision, impact 671 West and 633 West. The conditional use permit itself is, as noted, because the request exceeds a minimum requirement of 25 units, and so by R4 standards, there's a requirement that it be a conditional use review. The applicant group, therefore, has submitted the application for that request. You'll note in the packet that the general plan designation for this property is currently set at residential medium density. The project does seem to be in compliance with the land use designation for these properties. A smaller portion of this project proposed located in the area of the general plan that is set for planned commercial high, because it was obviously once fronting the 700 West with Kerry Cycle, and it once had that designation, but the, the proposed use would complement supporting the adjacent planned commercial high uses, and obviously with the future general plan, these kind of issues will, will get washed out and cleaned up, that's the intent. So don't, don't get concerned about that, I guess, is my point. That being said, we'll cover the, the subdivision site plan here shortly as items B and C. The basis for review of conditional use permit is noted in your packet, articles A through G, there's multiple different things you're looking at. Again, you're trying to identify if there would be any detrimental impacts or effects to any surrounding property owners, users, et cetera, that may be impacted as you look at the conditional use. The Planning Commission, for the purposes of this discussion, is the administrative approval entity for tonight's discussion on that. You will then switch hats, obviously, and be a recommendation review body for items B and C on this agenda item. You'll see that the applicant has submitted the application for the conditional use permit, paid the fee, and then you'll see that there's the, the site plan document thereafter as part of that. So the one thing I would, would caution, things that get down into more of the substantial nitty-gritties of the actual subdivision site plan would be better set for that. However, if there are specific conditions or concerns that need to be addressed as part of any motion or discussion made, they would be, be fair to discuss and negotiate at this time with the applicant to, to, I guess, work through that before you make any final decision-making on that request. So with that, I would defer to the Planning Commission, and if you have any questions for me or Mr. Johnson, we're glad to help you where we can. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? State your name, please, and your city of residence.
Logan Johnson, Centerville, Utah.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you have on that conditional use application.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Johnson. I think one of the main concerns is with traffic, and I know that we did a traffic study and have some information about that in the packet, but one of the concerns is with the entrance and exit on 700 West, and we don't want people turning left from 700 West into the apartment complex. And so one thing that was noted by city staff was that the traffic control pork chop needs to be redesigned to, because it currently allows for left turns into the property, and also that we need to consider access for fire department vehicles to be able to, to access that. Is that something that you've thought about already as you've looked over?
Yes.
The information here?
Yep. Our intent in the design of that pork chop was to restrict right-in, right-out. So it sounds like the tool, the engineer chose, the shape of the concrete maybe was insufficient. We have no objection to modifying that per the engineer's standards, and if we need to do something that is a little higher, or has some mechanism that, that further restricts left-out, or left-hand movements on that, we have no objection to that. Our intent was to restrict that to right-in, right-out, and of course, allow for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, to that comment, this kind of covers both the site, or the, the site plan and this item. Mr. Johnson, I was in a meeting with the fire chief, and he commented just that, that the pork chop be somehow designed to be mountable. I think, I can't remember if the Public Works Director or the fire chief had some ideas on how to design that such that it could be mountable, so it doesn't take out the under portions of a, of a fire vehicle, but if there's a way that it could be designed to be mountable, that was the only concern they had with it.
For sure, and we'll reach out to them to coordinate that, and make sure if they know of it, a shape or cast size or something, that it can be done. And in listening, if you don't mind, commissioners, to Caroline's comments, I just took a quick look at that traffic study that we had submitted to maybe just provide some high-level information. We are aware of it, you know, we understand that that's a busy area of the city. Our data shows that right now, in the AM peak, you have about a 26-second average delay on some of those worst turns, and in the PM, which seems a little worse, you have about a 33-second delay that you may be running into. Our project seeks to mitigate its impact on the intersection by forcing, for one, right-in, right-outs on those turns, and then also having the secondary access to, to alleviate any pressure, and our, our research shows that we anticipate the AM peak to go from about 26 to 27.2 seconds, still a C-grade intersection in both scenarios. And likewise, on the PM peak, from 33 seconds to 34.4, still a C-grade to C-grade, which is within the acceptable realm of, of the city standards. We're not denying that it's, it's a tough traffic situation, we're doing our best to mitigate, and also pointing, obviously, the non-peak hours, it functions as an A for most of the day, which we've had some intersections that don't, unfortunately, but just thought that might be useful information to the commission.
And the, the times that you're quoting are from your traffic study?
That's correct, yep, it's all in that traffic study. I just pulled it up while I was sitting here and just jotted down, so those high-level, little bit easier to understand elements in it.
You need the traffic study?
No, uh-uh. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that clarification.
Great, and so in, in, in terms of the conditional use, if, if the detrimental impact identified is traffic here, we believe that we, per state law, are doing our best to mitigate that according to the requirements, and, and would therefore request and approval on the conditional use. Thank you, unless there's other questions, sorry.
There, this was addressed in our work session, that there's one S curve in there, that there was some concerns as to whether any of ours' fire apparatus would be able to navigate that because how tight that is. Do you? Do you foresee any ability to be able to mitigate that and to address that?
We have the ability to run a turning template where we can use software to take, we could find the fire truck side, but we sort of have standard sizes that, that show whether that goes through. Generally, as a rule of thumb, we try to run those before we settle on a site plan. I, the S curve you're talking about must be at the southwest corner.
Yeah, and I, oh, go ahead, Mike. I just can say, I, again, I know, I have some insight on the internal dialogue about that, cuz I talked to the fire inspector that looked at that. There's certain ladder trucks that are bigger apparatus that I think he said either Ogden or the fire districts that we charter with would utilize, and they might utilize to be in there, and he's concerned that those kind of trucks are larger than the truck that was used in the study and may have a harder time navigating those movements.
Did we have a turning template on there? I forget.
You do have a page. It's, it's C two oh one, but he, he, looking at the truck that was used on there, it's a single engine truck, and he, he thinks the ones that are actual ladder trucks that may need to go in there would not be able to navigate those movements, and so a bigger truck may need to look at that, that use and how they get around in there.
And that would be due to the height of the buildings and, and things like that, correct?
Again, not knowing, not being a fire specialist, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but he said that there would be some, some trucks in the district that would come in to assist that might need that, that kind of movement and wouldn't be able to navigate that very easily.
Well, we would be happy to run a turning template on that with a larger truck. We can get in contact with them. If it doesn't fit, I suspect we are overparked just a smudge per ordinance. We hate to lose any stalls, especially concerning the city's concern, but I suspect we could increase those radiuses sufficiently by knocking out a stall or two, or a little landscaping, all of which we can afford to lose a little, but I think that's addressable for sure.
And that, that consideration would be more with the site plan than it would be with the conditional use permit as well?
It, it kind of, it kind of could be in both, but again, i- if you feel like there's been a reasonable representation of, of resolving that issue, then clearly there wouldn't be anything that would be detrimental of the conditional use being considered.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for the request for the development of multi-family residential units in excess of twenty-five dwelling units located approximately six seventy-one West forty-four hundred South Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by Wright Development Group.
Do we have a second?
Is that with the assumption that these?
You can, you can make a request to modify the motion, just that the items we discussed be worked with staff in resolution, some to that effect, if you felt like that, that was warranted, and then if Commissioner Herman accepts us, then that would be a modified motion that could be seconded.
Okay.
Well, I'd be happy to modify that. That, that would, of course, need to, those concerns, especially the traffic concerns, would need to be addressed and taking, and, and handled.
If you don't mind, wow, I'm, I'm getting bold here mid-motion. The traffic concerns specifically on the pork chop?
On the pork chop.
Is what I'm understanding was the discussion? Okay, great.
And the S curve?
S curve as well, I think.
Yeah, the S curve as well.
Okay, and the fire truck?
Emergency vehicles can get in there as needed.
Yeah, safety is important with that.
Okay, Commissioner Herman, do you accept both those articles as part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
All in favor, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Okay, item B. Consideration of a recommendation to city council for final subdivision request for Wright Development Group Riverdale subdivision located at approximately six seventy-one West and six thirty-three West forty-four hundred South Riverdale, eight four four oh five, as requested by Wright Development Group.
Thank you again. Mr. Johnson represents this. This is just as it relates to the subdivision sheet, which would be near the, well, I have, I have it pulled out for the purposes of the item. Never mind, it's here. So looking at my review comment, the, the only thing I noted on the plat itself is the date on the plat needs to be updated to reflect the more current time. It was just showing December twenty twenty-two, which is not really a big issue. Some of the other items that are addressed here that I'll discuss will be part of the site plan. So as it relates to the plat, that's really the only item I have. Looking at the public works, I don't see anything as it relates to the plat itself other than the typical documents will be recorded with the plat when that time comes. Looks like majority of his items, if not all, are otherwise engineering-related to the site plan. No comments relative to the plat itself from the fire or police. As it relates to the city engineer comments on the plat, there's items one through nine look like cleanup items regarding the plat. Point at the beginning, leader line on the plat covered by fence line, doesn't appear to be indicated correctly. Boundary description should include total area. Below description, areas shown on the plat do not match the area enclosed by the description. Adjacent roadways need to be identified. State road designation included if applicable. Dates on the plat need to be updated. New lot should have a minimum of ten-foot PUE added along all boundaries of subdivision, including roadway drainage. Proposed buildings are over existing easements. Are easements being vacated if so were they indicated? So if that's an issue, we, we can work through easement discussions and what we need to vacate those. There may be, just need to be vacation plat added. That might be something that we just do as a secondary component. So we'll have subdivision that, subdivision plat, vacation plat, but we'll still approve them as part of the subdivision process at, at worst. And then the vicinity map needs to show the correct location and suggest removal of all notes not pertaining to easements and plat information to make the plat more readable. So those are his comments as it relates to the plat. All things that I think are easy, not easy, I can't speak for any engineering discussions, but seem to be addressable. We'll say that. Then you'll see the application thereafter for that. The reason that there's three applications is there's three property owners that are impacted by the subdivision, so don't think that, that I just repeat, you know, the, the application three times. There actually are three legitimate applications.
I just thought you wanted to make our packet bigger.
It's kind of an interesting situation, but, but we're consolidating multiple properties into two lots at the end of the day is what we're talking about. And then you'll see the fee paid, and you'll see the, the subdivision plat thereafter. So that's, that's article B, and I would refer to the planning commission for questions or comments from me or Mr. Logan, or Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, does anyone like have any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Regarding the plat?
Yeah, just the plat element.
Yeah, just regarding that.
And again, you are, I'm sorry.
Are a recommendation body at this point to the city council.
All right, if there isn't, is there something? You look pending.
No, um, I would like, for the record, to at least address Carolyn's responses and just say that I appreciate, and we as a planning commission appreciate comments and concerns of the members of our community. Like yourself, we're members of the same community, and we've, you know, we do all due diligence trying to make sure that our considerations are tempered with having to abide by code, but still address your concerns. We, I can assure you that we've made an earnest effort and we have been thoughtful in making these considerations. As was already addressed, the traffic study had already been considered, and so it, it's appropriate and it meets the basic standards for this type of development. As uncomfortable as that may make and as inconvenient as that may make, even myself here as a resident of the city, I love, I put up with the traffic because I love the convenience of the city. So I just wanted you to be assured that your comments didn't go unappreciated and unconsidered. So thank you for that. We appreciate, and we desperately need citizen comments to help, help us make good decisions. So thank you. However, under these circumstances, you know, this becomes a, a matter of meeting standards set forth by code, and accordingly, I would make a recommendation that we can forward a favorable recommendation to the city council for the final subdivision request for WDG's Riverdale subdivision located at approximately six seventy-one West and six thirty-three West forty-four hundred South Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by Wright Development Group, pending completion and addressing the concerns already mentioned by staff and the city engineer and meeting their, their standards for that to be completed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please poll the commission.
Commissioner Eskelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
And that is unanimous.
And I just wanted to note real quick before we go to article C, again, this is just for the subdivision, not the site plan portion of it, and the subdivision is, what you had was multiple lots with really strange, not really strange, but different configurations due to the previous use of the site. This is a cleanup effort to consolidate it down to just two clear lots. Now, the second lot, one thing I will note and note on the record, there is an anticipation at a later date of a site, a site plan development coming forward to improve lot two. So I will note that on the record.
And that's the, the one to the west, correct?
So, so, or to the east.
East, that's what I meant to say, I apologize.
So just note that, 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 that it's not like they're just doing a subdivision. There's this, this lot two that's just hanging out back there. There is a plan. It is all by design, so just note that as part of that. But anyway, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, we'll go on to item C. Consideration of recommendation to city council for final site plan request for Riverdale apartments located at approximately six seventy-one West forty-four hundred South Riverdale, Utah, eight four four oh five, as requested by Wright Development Group. Mr. Aggett?
Thank you. Now I can go and cover the, the remainder of the comments, the few that I had as it relates to this. On the site plan, we just don't, both I and the city public works director have noted that the private irrigation plans haven't been provided yet for the landscaping plan. We do want to see that. I don't know of any anticipated apartment facility signage at this point, if there's any plan. It's not required, but it just, just to help paint the picture if we do have it. So I, I've noted in yellow, obviously, if we're going to council, I probably just underline it. It's the, the note that we don't have, but clearly, if they do want signage, it, it helps to sell the, the image of the product. The building size varies, but the range of sizes specifically isn't known. Again, that's an item that I can soften when it goes to the council, but I just wanted to note that if there's any way we can get the variable size of what the building square footage might be, it might be just helpful information. The DRC is required, being the design review is required regarding elevation drawings and the overall aesthetic of the site, landscape plan, so we will need to set that up, and I can work with Mr. Johnson in setting that up. That's one item I noted. Under new and existing electrical lines, I just note new exit, new electrical line size and type location project not shown. Under telephone, existing and new telephone line size and type location project not shown. Sometimes there'll even be a note that says we'll work with telephone company or, or power company in identifying standards of utility company. That would be sufficient too, just something that indicates one way or another, either how it's gonna be routed or let them decide, just so it's clear on the, on the drawings. Water, water right transfer documentation needs to be provided, and that, that's the extent of my commentary. As it relates to the public works director, very similar ones we see drainage system, operation, maintenance plan and BMPs approved and recorded with plat for stormwater. Site is now retention basin. Please provide for free board on retention structure, emergency overflow. I think his comment there is it's not a detention basin, it's retention basin based on how it's designed, but I would just advise the applicant group to work with Mr. Douglas on that. Hydraulic separator BMPs to treat stormwater before water enters the city U dot system. Notice of intent file of state. He says retention, detention, structure, design and material shown. There is concern with retention basin in the current design materials. I think his comment is relative to it being also utilizes a dog park and some of the, the surfaces being artificial turfs. He's concerned about if you have a mixture of animal waste product and a retention system, and you have stagnant water, what, what does that look like? How does that work? Is it gonna be cleaned up? He, he's just not quite sure how that will function and operate, and I think his concern would be stagnant water with waste if that becomes an issue for the residents. So, so whatever the, the plan is for that, that's, I think, where his comment areas referencing. Under streets, we already talked about it. Traffic control pork chop needs to be redesigned. Current design will allow left turns. Consideration should begin for emergency vehicles in the inlet side of the structure. Water, existing water utilities shown on plans, provide irrigation sprinkler system plan, provide water shares, same things I kind of hit. Sewer show existing sewer main and laterals. A will serve letter from Central Weaver Sewer Improvement District needs to be provided. I, I've provided that new, that is a new requirement going forward, just so the planning commission is aware. We, we learned recently the sewer, the sewer improvement district does require a will serve letter from all new development projects, so they can have a better understanding of what the needs are of Riverdale. The, the, what that does is that gets, helps them get a, a more clear picture of use in the city and also helps them to better update and maintain systems in the city where it's necessary. So, and Mr. Johnson's been more than, been willing to help with that, but I just want to let you know, as a planning commission, that you will see that going forward on, on projects. Other landscaping around current city sign needs to allow clear view of the sign. A detailed spec sheet needs to be provided for the canine grass. Please provide information for landscaping the park strips. Under the police department, the police chief, he only makes one comment. I would agree with the traffic state. Do not allow left-hand turns out of the complex on seven hundred West. I know it's kind of a mute issue, but I want to just express his comments. Design of the pork chop would need further discussion. Allow access for fire engine in and out for emergency response. Fire chief, I've spoken with, with Randy, who's the fire inspector, fire marshal. There's an FDC. We would like to have move, so it's not on the main roadway next to the hydrant to match dealers within the complex. We're also concerned about the turning radius the engineer using is not our specification. We'll get more information on this. So there's, there's that comment. Under the, the fire marshal comment, show turning radius, move FDC, provide water supply analysis. Westside entrance does not meet with requirements. Not quite sure exactly what he's, he's anticipating there, Logan, but yeah, that's what he says, but clearly I could provide you with his contact information and get you in touch with him. It's Randy Koger. You may have talked to him already, so. And then he, he put in yellow cloud any revisions made. I, I don't know if, if he's saying some of the revisions made weren't clouded. I see clouding, so I'm not sure specifically what he feels like wasn't clouded, but anyway, that's his note. Under the engineer comments, as it relates to improvement drawings, slab and dumpster enclosure would need to be thick enough to withstand weight of the full dumpster, et cetera. Again, the engineer can speak with him if, if he has more thoughts there. Landscaping, I, I looked at, this is actually not true what he says. It took me a minute to catch it. There's a, we allow for colored stamped concrete to qualify for, for landscaping, and so what it is, the landscape designer actually split it out, so it looks like they don't meet the thirtieth percentile, but when you add together, actually is thirty-one point two percent. Our engineer just didn't see it. It took me a minute to see it. I'm like, oh, there it is. I figured, I got it. So, and, and they even comment on it, so I'll, I'll update him on that. I got that for you. Landscaping plans, you have irrigation plan and connection details plan. Again, a comment about seven hundred West restriction. Title block and addressing K plat do not match. Geotechnical reports submitted must be followed. The pavement design will need to be updated in the drawing notes. Not sure exactly what he means there, but we can explore that. Culinary water issues need to provide a detail for installation of backflow preventer. Irrigation plan needs to be provided for sites showing connections to backflow device. Grading and drainage issues, there's multiple there that are, they're probably all engineering in nature. I'm not gonna really get into it, other than advise the applicant to have their engineer talk with our engineer about that. The only other item I'll note is he has a similar comment at the very end. Artificial turf in the detention pond says canine grass are similar, and now it needs to be added as something other than canine grasses used, it needs to be reviewed and approved by the city. Also, the grass needs to be installed with stainless steel staples, anchors to ensure longevity. So there's that, and then stormwater protection plan issues, vicinity map on the SWP is incorrect. So those are Mr. Freeman's comments. You'll see the applications thereafter, the fee being paid, review, response comments from Mr. Johnson's engineering team following thereafter in the form of kind of a matrix sheet, and then you'll see the elevation drawings, which I anticipate will be the elevation drawings. It'll be part of a design review committee at a later date, and then storm drain documentation, showing the, the calculations and how they'll be assessed, and the maintenance ideas, and then you'll see thereafter the site plan drawings. Appreciate your patience with me. I know it's a lot of information, and I defer to the planning commission if you have any other questions or comments from me or Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
I do have one question. Logan, as, as far as what I see on the plat maps, I see the recommended parking spaces for the number of units that's coming in. What happens if somebody wants to bring four vehicles in versus there should only be two per house unit? How is that gonna be controlled? So if somebody brings in a trader and a camper and parks something in there that's above and beyond the standard of two? How are we gonna control that? You don't bring in, you know, all kinds of different vehicles and park them in there and take in other people's spots?
It's a fair question. The parking ratios given in the city ordinance are sort of a general assumption. You know, some bedrooms or some units may only have one driver, some may have more, and the city ordinance sort of makes an assumption that there'll be a little ebb and flow and that maybe, maybe. that maybe, maybe there'll be some people that need more spaces and, and some that don't. We don't want to have a, a parking situation that doesn't allow our tenants to have convenient and good parking. So, we have onsite managers, if there's an issue, the city always has the right to, to contact us and say, hey, you're parking, you're spilling off onto the street, you were proved under this many stalls, get it in order. And then we can, we have the right to enforce with our tenants, we plan on owning this project in the long run, and we have the ability to enforce that. But specifically, I would guess that there could be some scenarios that we have a couple of units that do take up four stalls and maybe some that take up one stall, and, and we're hopeful and confident that the parking ratio that is submitted in this application will be sufficient for the project. I know that the city has recently upped that since our application. We own a lot of projects from Pocatello down to Washington, and we feel really comfortable about the number here, and, and we, we think it's going to be easy to manage and, and we'll be taken care of. If memory serves, we do not have any garages on this site, which normally that can be a problem, people fill up their garages, so sometimes garages count towards parking spots, but here, because the parking was a little lower, we said, let's not play the garage game, let's have clear open stalls, so we have as many stalls available as we can, because where the city was, was right about where we like to be, even though I know you guys have adjusted it later. But I hope that addresses your question, Commissioner. I, I can address some of the other items if you'd like, Chair, that Mike brought up, or we can just take them individually if you have specific.
If you'd like to go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you'd like to go ahead and address them, and then we can ask questions?
But, I could zip through. So, private irrigation seemed like a big one, we didn't include the plan. I'll just need to go strangle my landscaper. Sometimes we get a million plans back and I assume they did their job right, and I send it to Mike. And so, we believe we can get that in no problem. We know that irrigation lines are there on the civil, and exactly how those details work out, we're confident, it's not a big problem, backflow preventers is going to happen. So, we're hopeful that that won't hold up the application. Signage, we do want to have a sign in place, however, the place that we wanted to put it is currently in flux with the bus stop. We've had a number of discussions with the bus stop, and they, and they're excited to come here. We anticipate, and we wanted this to be ready by the application, but they were taking their sweet time. They are great to work with, UTA was great. We anticipate the bus stop will be up behind the dumpster, the enclosed dumpster sort of closer to the roundabout, that's where they wanted it. We talked about the, the proximity to the roundabout, and they said as long as we have that pull off, it's actually better, the closer they get to the intersection, it makes their merge back in a little easier, just less traffic to deal with, it's usually flowing a little better. And so, our anticipation is that is where the bus stop will be, and the, the monument sign, which would be five feet or something to that effect, would just be south of that between the roundabout and the access.
Logan, when, when UTA agrees to do that and you're ready to do that, will you be sure to communicate that to Sean?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. And, and so, we're just working out the details of, of what details they want in the civil sheet and a few things like that, so.
The, that, that sign won't in any way impede vision as coming out of that driveway, will it?
We'll keep it out of the site triangle coming out of that driveway. We have plenty of space between the access and the roundabout, even with a bus stop, so we don't anticipate it being anywhere near the site triangle.
Okay.
I think we'll be just fine there. On the DRC, I'd love to combine that with the north project when we do that, Mike. Maybe we could take those elevations from the north. You guys might be aware, we've acquired the property across the street that was previously approved, and we're going to, we're going to make them one, and so there's going to be a little bit of architecture theming to make those come together. So, we'd love for those both to be part of that DRC. Telephone note, thank you, we harassed the telephone company to, no end, to tell us to have a plan, they said, well, we want you to have the city plan first, so we will add that note and make sure to coordinate that. We are happy to adjust the materials in the detention basin. Previously, we had a basin that was a storage system, but when we got the geotech back, maybe it's because it's this year when we did the test, the water was high enough that it made us a little nervous that the underground system wouldn't have enough capacity if the groundwater was starting to flirt with that detention system. So, we said, let's bring it above ground. We kind of reconfigured that open space and, and oversized it a little bit to put that in there. Based on the, the data that we have in our geotech report, we don't think there'll be standing water, even at a year as high as this. We, the standing water wouldn't hit there, we wanted to get it above any of that, just in case we have a few wet years coming on the pike. So, we're happy to change any materials with the dog park. I don't see us having standing water, if the geotech isn't showing it today, this year, I just don't see it happening, but we're happy to adjust any materials and have that discussion.
I would say even what you just said about the, the underground tanks.
Yeah.
With the groundwater.
Right.
That would be very illuminating for Todd and, and Sean to hear.
Okay.
Because I think that's part of the, the confusion, is you had a system that worked perfectly fine.
Yeah.
But hearing that.
Yeah.
Gives the big, makes the big question mark away even in my mind.
I should have addressed that in the comments, yeah.
So, maybe that conversation would be helpful.
Great, it was close, we just, we didn't want it to be close, we didn't want to be in a situation where we couldn't detain, because we're punching it into UDOT and they have no forgiveness, and so.
On the water table, be it the river right there, is pretty high.
Yeah.
I mean, pretty quickly.
Yeah, so we were anxious to get that report back, and so anyway, we're, we're trying to play a little safer, that's why we moved it up and, and brought the basin above ground, but.
So, how's that going to change the dog park area? It will still be there?
Yeah.
And will it still be the same kind of grass and things that you were referring to?
That's right, we wanted to use the same materials. Now, if, if staff wants us to adjust those materials, we're happy to do that, but the idea was the dog park has now grown a little bit as, as it's taking up the majority of the basin. We used to have the pickleball courts over there, we've pulled those down, and unfortunately we couldn't fit a second one elegantly, so we, we cinched it down to one pickleball court. The pool space grew just a little bit, and we've kind of moved the playground into the middle of the buildings, and so now that area on the east is, is much larger, and we've, we've delineated it into two dog parks, one for smaller dogs and one for larger dogs, just something that our managers have told us we need to start doing more often. And we anticipate that the fence will, will be on the upper edge, and then we'll traverse down just the, the gradual slope into the basin. The basin's big enough too that we hope it doesn't feel as much like a detention basin, we tried to make it a large, a large basin so that it doesn't feel like the dogs are going down into a pit, but rather it's, it's sort of just a designated space that can serve both functions, and we don't anticipate there being standing water unless it was a really unusual year, maybe even more unusual than this year, but.
Say again to that, just make sure that that's, that's discussed with Mr. Douglas and Mr. Freeman and probably.
Great.
Work through it, yeah.
And then the last item, that will serve letter, we did receive that yesterday from the sewer district, so that came in and Sean was on the email, so. Sorry, that was too much. Any other questions?
Who, who maintains the dog park as far as cleaning it, keeping it clean, especially, you know, wet weather can be an issue as, as well as hot weather and, and, you know, which were, I mean, obviously you won't be there, but, you know, we're going to be coming into shortly. The smell, the, you know, things like that, who keeps that maintained?
So, on our other sites, this is something that comes up a lot in property management, is we require the tenants to clean up after their own dogs, we have stations out with bags. It became an issue of whose dog is too, so there's actually this very sophisticated system that when you move in, you have to register your dog by sending a sample of their fecal matter to a lab, and then they can, they can catalog each dog, and then if the property managers go out and find that there isn't, that there's some feces that have not been picked up, they can actually take it, send it to the lab, and they can identify whose dog it was, and it sounds gross, but it works, and they just deem with a fine, it usually takes one time and they don't make the mistake again. And because we're having an enclosed dog park area, we think we can manage unknown dogs much more effectively in that regard, but that's sort of the system that we anticipate here.
Thank you.
Is there any type of sanitation that's periodically maintained on that or?
Yeah, especially if we do non-natural surfaces, will, there'll be a spray that will be done, usually, I want to say it's quarterly at least, or it's depending on the season, I wish I knew more off the top of my head, but there is a spray that they can do on that. I feel like it happens less if we have natural vegetation.
Sure.
But I could get more information on that, but that's as far as I know there.
What does your property managers do as far as their general role? What's, what's their function day to day to maintain the facility?
So, at lease up, we'll have probably four or five full-time staff as the project, project leases up and we have a lot of people come, and then once we get stabilized at 90 to 95% occupied, then on this site, we'll have one full-time maintenance employee and probably one full-time leasing agent and a, and a part-time leasing agent here. So, there'll be two and a half full-time staff onsite, all business days, and frankly, a lot of their time I hear is spent policing dogs and dog poop, unfortunately. But they'll be there full-time just for different needs, so we'll have, the maintenance guy can replace light bulbs or fix things or do different things, and the leasing agent is just there for the sort of ongoing negotiations of people moving in and moving out.
Logan, to that, might I just ask, are, are you still open to the idea of having some moderate income rental units within the, the project?
We anticipate that the rents we project on some of these units will meet the threshold required by the city, that's our projection. There was no discussion, and I, I think it might be a hard sell to have any deed restriction at this point.
Oh, and we don't, we don't want that, we just want to be able to communicate to the state legislature.
Yeah.
That your facility accommodates some of those needs for our city.
Yeah, and we project some of our units will meet that threshold, and rents haven't